All of the needed order and. You come, you guys.
What?
I would like to review this to require. And to model with basic standards. One initial on the. Into this all we can see in itself.
Councilman Burr Busby.
Mm hmm.
Councilmember Pride.
Mm hmm.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas. Mayor Hudson.
President.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
There is like change in the origin.
Okay, so first item seven made it for the heart scale. There's waiting to be able to make it to the representation. Chaney and Britain. Like a very kind of accepting the. Better for you. Yeah, you can go for. And so this is the time here. And we go over the the year review. Uh, thank you to accomplish some challenges that we have. The successes that we count. Almost there off with the fire. My rules to be the other us. We reflect on the past year and a primary trial presented two thousand and twenty four. And it's covered. To the lowest fire time. This year has been one of the zone incident or vice. And I believe information from my fire department staff and the community that serve. In two thousand and twenty four. Our department responded to a regular number of calls within the charter fires while incidents, scenic emergencies, and as these particular situations. Each response was not a professional language. And the name to protect the life and property. Now with the mind of thinking about tireless suffers and that ability to face the evolving challenges. Charity and preparedness remained for those who are in charge. This year we enhanced our charity programs to include enhanced fire rate techniques and recent medical response. And we will create new synergies. These efforts and shares are personal and quick. With the skills and knowledge we need to understand the fact that losing these situations. We also have to continue to invest in equipment to keep this community firefighting at their ass. And updating our facilities. To improve the strong signs and operation of fresh efficiency. To advance and partner tips to enable modernize our fleet. And expand our capabilities without placing undue fines or revenue. Here we engage that remains important shown of our department. Through public education programs, school visits, and pipeline initiatives, we have strengthened our connection with the relevant authorities. Prior safety starts with awareness and we are committed to foster healthier awareness. As we move into twenty twenty five and we're ready to open this honoration suite with integrity, courage, and excellence. I want to extend out even started to give the role of the Willows Fire Department. For their dedication. The city leadership, their support. And to our community, with their trust in us. Together, we will continue to keep them listed. Uh, the next piece will be a little bit of the uh, one of our volunteers. Uh, something we didn't leave. May please believe more technically. Um, when I'm. So I can play any part of it.
Okay, give me a second. There's no sound. Yeah, I'll just put it up.
I did earlier.
Looks fine, dude, certainly it's more savvy than.
Sounds uncertain. All joined together informing repositioned teams staff to their home stations in order to quickly tackle potential major problems. Before they have the chance to spiral up. When our firefighters weren't responding because they were out and about working in their community. Volunteering for non emergency. Of course, training. Will's fire also has continued to aggressively expand its use of new techniques and technology. In order to provide the safest and most effective treatments of medical fire emergencies alike. Whether it's refreshing the medical skills in the classroom or working with active fires in the field. Our firefighters are constantly appearing to be the best in the worst case scenarios. This past year, our firefighters have responded to airplane crashes, floods, and massive wildfires. These calls have tested our firefighters and oftentimes taken them far from home for long periods of time. But they've done their duty, returned home with honor to keep serving our town. Our firefighters have also honored several fallen heroes this year. Some taken far too early, some who have vowed to home after decades of service. We as a whole mourn their losses, carry their memories with us. Hope that our service makes them proud as they watch over us. As we started new year of service, we've already been tested to dynamic emergency calls at home, deployed to the system, reaching all fires down south. Twenty twenty five seems to have started off with a pain. But our firefighters are united to be ready to face it with them, but don't mind toward them.
Eighteen, if you understand.
Now we haven't posted yet.
How do you make it go to just like where it's not where it's just on here?
It wouldn't reveal what the software.
I'm completely confused. Might have broken it. Oh, you're telling us.
It's.
Um.
Hmm.
Yes, change the input on TV. Is it all working with uh, this one line?
This one.
You know, if nobody was watching it, it would work.
Yeah. Yeah, it worked earlier. Well, why are you going through that?
The uh.
Mayor Hudson, thank you for the acting support.
Yeah, obviously not working. Like you're trying to have this hard.
Always had a.
Don't get that with salt, but not.
So the city of Willows basically consists of three heard the city laws, the Willows Fire Department. Basically consists of three um, separate organizations, one is the city fire department. The organization structure consists of citizens. And it's. Murray Brown, our city manager. Um, Murray is my boss. Um, I have three shifts. One person each shift. Which is Tyler is on A shift, Tyler Lombard on B shift, and kind of contest on C shift. The second leg of the Willows Fire Department. Is the Willows Rural Fire Protection District. Uh, they basically have seven years for my history. Uh, that surrounds the city. Um, we've had an agreement with them since nineteen seventy five, sharing facilities and resources. Uh, they have a your board. Um, and one one required to. Third, way of tool is the Willows Volunteer Card. There are constant checks that prevent speaking of the city and the world are coming. Their five one C period. Uh, there's about thirty to thirty five. Uh, that device that I think for emergency response city and. The next one that you've seen is that. And hold your slide. A two thousand and four Willows Fire Department priorities. Uh, this is. One priority, we said we were funded with the game and emergencies. Uh, we responded to one thousand ninety eight calls for service. Uh, number two was that we were being trained one, we spent about two thousand hours in the department carrying the ship. Uh, number three. Uh, recruitment and growth of the Willows Volunteer Fire Department. We recruited and trained sixteen volunteer firefighters, we did lose a couple. Um, but we gained more than what we lost. Uh, number four was securing outside. Uh, finding sources of experience. And five, to replace. We outdated safety. Two thousand and twenty four emergency response review. The Willows Fire Department. The city fire department had seven hundred and fifty seven incidents. And uh, the Willows Rural Fire Protection District had three hundred and forty one. Um, a little bit busier in the rural district this year than it has been in uh, past years. Uh, typically runs about twenty four to twenty five percent in the rural position. Uh, it was about thirty one percent of the problem.
There we go. Do you know what slide we're on?
Alright.
Oh.
Come back.
Right there? Okay.
Okay, so this is going to be all of that we have on the Willows Fire Department. How we're used to the city after that. Uh, this is engine three, this is the type on fire and things primarily used for correction. Uh, fires and vehicles and things like that, it's placed in service and T dollars will join. It was purchased by. Um, it should. They listen to you have about a thirty year lifespan, fifteen years in front of land service and then fifteen years in reserve and to be replaced in front of it. Uh, estimated cost to replace is one point four million, that's a, that's a complete wild guess and probably not right. That's not, you know, it's kind of collecting. Uh, condition, I did have one here, uh, like you. Um, had, it's currently out of service. Uh. Uh, there's, there's starting to be some issues with the uh, EGR, all the death systems and stuff like that. Um, so we're in, we're waiting on some parts, so we're kind of, kind of destroying the evening. Yes, like. Engine two, uh, this is our reserve type one, so whenever engine three needs a break and needs some repairs, this is the one that we're in. Um. Engine two was placed in service in nineteen ninety four. Uh, could be replaced today. It's in poor condition. Definitely cost to replace this. As soon as we can find. A flying source for it, it's currently. Engine two is. Very tired. And we uh, have done our best to keep one long, but stay part of. It's like. This is truck four, uh, it's placed in service in two thousand and four, it's got a twenty five year life, life expectancy. Uh, so it should be replaced in two thousand and nine. Um. I also have this in good condition, this one's currently out of service as well. Uh. There's the issue with uh, the wiring mess. And so that's currently in the hand as well, we try to figure out um. What parts may be replaced. And uh, there's still that amnesty problem, um, but it's out of service now. This is utility seven, this replaces yours in two thousand and twenty three, it's got a fifteen year life expectancy. Um, it's in new condition, estimated cost of replacement with the old, the radio didn't ever see like that, it'd be fifteen years on this, and it'll probably be somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand. This truck was purchased one hundred percent grant funded. So. Uh, that's utility eight. Um, should be replaced since two thousand and twenty three, it's in good condition overall. And estimated costs in twenty thirty three, also commensurate somewhere around a hundred thousand. Agent five is the new engine, new to us engine that we uh, finished putting in service this year in two thousand and twenty four. Uh, we expect it to last us fifteen years and then it will go away. Uh, it's in good condition, uh, we received it under the uh, federal access program for the case there was a uh, United States Forest Fire Team. And then fifteen years, they state their reasons of service. Um, and then give them away to on a permanent loan basis. Uh, to smaller dealerships who could use it. Uh, with the caveat that you can't within a year. And. With the color and the stripes, I remember this really bad thing. Uh, we. Could have gotten one a little bit sooner, but we chose to be a little picky on what is we got, uh, so we chose to get one from uh, the Los Angeles National Forest because there were, it's going to be a lot nicer than uh. Let's say if we were to wait, I've gotten them from the claim that there's something like having been beaten up a lot more. Uh, we spent about. Uh, fifteen to twenty thousand dollars uh. On paint and uh, equipment to get into engine service, so it was a great deal for the city. Uh, engine fourteen, so now we're getting into the Willows Rural Fire Protection District that runs, this is the two thousand and four. Um, it's kind of like the, the workforce engine of the. Uh, for the rural district. Uh, it's in good condition and it's a type three, which is mainly for like wildland fires, uh, it can and has it on the V sharp fires, primarily designed for wildland fires. And that's the cost regardless would be six hundred fifty thousand. This is engine twelve, this is the newest engine in the Willows Fire Fleet, uh, was placed in service. Uh, in July of this year. Um, we figured it's going to last about twenty years, ten, five, ten, reserve. Uh, it's brand new, I estimate it costs replacement three hundred fifty thousand, again, that's kind of a guess. We purchased it for uh, two hundred and thirty six thousand dollars with a hundred and thirty nine thousand in between from grant. Uh, so that purchase was completely. May cost all four, not by, definitely. This is the sixteen, this is sixteen will be the next piece of equipment that gets replaced by the rural district. It was placed in service in two thousand. Uh, it's in fair condition, but it's starting to get to the point where uh, when we take out places and, and use it more and more things are breaking, yeah. We had to replace probably four or five thousand dollars from the parts we were there. Um, when we went down with the Palisades. Next slide. Uh, water tender fifteen, this is uh, the district's water tender, it's the only water tender that we have, uh, department. Then this purchase in two thousand and sixteen, then it's selecting. And finally, this is the airhouse gate trailer, this was purchased on a grant back in two thousand and seven. It's been I didn't pay out. Part of the calls, whole slide. Um, we expect for the last forty years, that's in good condition. The notable twenty twenty four achievements, uh, we pretty much wrapped up. Uh, the majority. Of our mobile and portable radio issues. Um, that was a multi-year progress for across multiple grants to get all that stuff replaced. Uh, we were able to get some. Um, more papers. And uh, the new pages that we're buying are actually going to be compatible with the. Digital radius, the sun that uh, will likely be going to be the next. Four or five years. Uh, on the county line level, so that'll make it, then we'll be prepared for that. Um. We fully implemented our task book training for our uh. Our task up based training for our, I don't know, each position firefighter and leader captain. We placed the, the used type three engine in service under federal access program. Uh, we placed the new type six fire engine in service. Uh, we had many joint agency trains with mutual aid partners, we did two thousand and twenty four rejuvenation, we completed fire prevention week for all primary elementary school age children. And on the gun force outside the house. Uh, we oversaw the demolition of two dilapidated structures in the middle of. That was the one line, um. North East Street. The three hour block and then uh, one forty one south proper. Uh, some more notable achievements. Uh, we uh, rehabilitated the uh, front lawn landscaping and the fire station that was all done with. Uh, from the Willows Car and Bike Show. Uh, and then lots of uh, labor of love from the volunteers, um, and the career staff. Uh. We implemented the. Uh, medication disposal program. We received our lupus device. Uh, from the homeland security grant. And we conducted and completed a fundraiser for a share. Uh, one of the things that we've been doing by time, um, in the last. I mean, two years has been, um. OAS deployments. Uh. So you'll see that, you know, some of our overtime budgets have been greatly exceeded. Uh, that's all short term because it's all reimbursed. Uh, by the state. Uh. Just some quick math, um. At the time that I created this presentation, it's no longer active because we have more assignments than we had to go off. Beginning tonight. Uh. We've got about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of any uh, extra expense. That expense will. Create approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of income for the equipment, well, the administration fees. Uh, all of that. Uh, the big program that we've been participating in is the previous for five months, where the state pays for us to have extra equipment, extra people. Um, in our own town, in our own county, we respond to local stuff. Um, it's all paid for and funded by uh, prepositioning, including two, two, a lot of things needed. Uh. So. You know, there's times where, you know, Monday through Friday, we'll be on preposition, I'll be instructed to leave to the county. Um. It's a double link to the city. Because the city during that time doesn't have to pay for the salary because the state's paying. So uh, there's been about twenty one thousand dollars worth of salaries today is, and my salary benefits. Uh. And they get profit to the city of about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, other revenue sources, so this is. Fiscal year to date, our fire recovery program, which is where we, you know, bill for vehicle accidents and certain things that are going to go to insurance, uh, we've received twenty one thousand sixty to the office. Uh, we'll receive about forty eight thousand dollars. For our contract contractual obligations with the Willows Rural Fire Protection District. Uh, we'll receive about a hundred and seventy thousand. Uh. From the we debate that grant. Code enforcement is right around eighteen thousand. Uh, the homeland security grant, which is a uh, grant that's paying for. Uh, Willows fire staff to teach. Some stop and leave classes to the community, um, it was part of the. Uh, we put that in the lead back. That helps to device and we had to do actual working community preparedness, so we ended up owning then. So those other sources of revenue is about two hundred and sixty thousand. That's like. So the general fund, this is the big one. So fiscal year, we had an approved budget of. Uh, seven hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. For twenty four, twenty five. Received slash anticipated net revenue. Uh, is four hundred and eighty one thousand. Uh, general fund, which equals a general one, giving up about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Which equates to about sixty two point four two percent of our budget being recovered through fire farming cities. Uh, that's something that. I'm very proud of. Uh. It's not. I think it's something that's very, um. Uh, it's a, we're an outlier in the world of public safety, you know, the most public safety agencies are in, so they've been covered up and up there. Uh, but that's because we recognize that. The environment we are in, and we're doing everything we can to be a good steward of public funds. Uh. Last year's slide. Uh, this one is. This was some of the big projects that we said that we were going to try to get done. Uh, we were going to transition to centralized dispatch. Continue to track and manage our grants. Explore some long-term sustainable solu- solutions for buyer funding needs. And we bring out a source funding for enhanced life support services, ensuring the citizens will have proper access to emergency medical care. That's what we said we were going to do, that's a cut based on last year's slide. In February of two thousand and twenty four. We officially switched over to non-accident about this for centralized dispatch, which was a project. Probably twenty five, thirty years in the banking. Um. Willows. And Orland did the majority of the training for the dispatchers. Uh, to get them, uh, they were all law enforcement inspectors and law enforcement fires very different. And so we spent uh, hours and hours and hours and hours. Um. Writing uh, SOPs and SOTs for them. Uh, doing state calls and pretending them, you know. Did having a dispatches, they destruction fires and, and working through some of those pickups. Um. It hasn't been the smoothest process, but all things considered, uh, people are getting dispatched. Uh, we have time to start less. And uh, overall the system's more efficient. It's like. Uh, so the, the grants that we received in two thousand and twenty fourth. We received a uh, uh, safer grant for forty seven thousand, seven hundred dollars for PPE and physical, um, and the medical physical reimbursements. Uh, we received, uh, this, you know, thirty four thousand five hundred and twenty five dollars, this was a grant extension for the county fire court intergrat. Uh, we received fifteen thousand dollars from the California Fire Foundation for the wildland housing partner. Uh, we received fifteen thousand dollars. From. Uh, on the rural side of the house from Cal Fire, uh, with acres and wildland PPE. And I, and I received nineteen thousand five hundred and seventy on the city side of the house. For radios and wildland PPE. Uh, in December of two thousand and twenty four, we were notified that we were awarded thirty five thousand dollars uh, for the purchase of ALS, uh. Uh, uh. Party of one. So that's the projects moving forward. We said we were ready to get ALS equipment and. Excellent. Uh, grants continue. In total, we uh, authored six successful grant packages, gathering over a hundred and sixty six thousand dollars in funding. And we continue to man- manage three separate multi-year grants. So there are two thousand and twenty four annuals response ties. Uh, kind of type of seat up on the board. Uh, in December. Is when the uh, subsidized twelve dollar. Uh in December is when the uh subsidized twelve hour bar was placed in Orland. That's been another project that I've been working on is making sure that that posting plan is being followed and that when Willows ambulance service and there's people in Orland. That that second truck is driving south uh and getting in a better spot so that closer to us. Uh it's not the perfect system, but it's been getting better on time work time with anything speaking about this mission service. Um we've actually had um. Three okay uh response times this year versus uh to the last three years. Um at my last year, there was only one or two months that we had them to do some additional card for ambulance this. Uh this year we've done quite a bit better and I anticipate that it's maybe ends of the future with the twelve hour card. Uh two thousand and twenty five. Which is. So the big projects that we need to to get um. Going for two thousand and twenty five, uh at the least in my state. Uh would be design and order to be two replacement, I don't think we're a spot. Uh where we can keep holding our breath for grant funding, uh I've tried. Uh probably. Four or five different grant applications through uh at least three separate programs to do funding for it and we have a group for it, yeah. Um I've tried U S D A, I've tried uh K I G. Uh I've tried direct funding request to come on this one, well, I hope. Uh and all of those have gone uh or have uh gone without success. Uh there's a saying that now saw a little France alone, it's great when we get them. Uh but I would strongly urge that that project gets made, uh especially with the long lead times. That that project gets pushed into the next basically, but. The uh next piece. Uh and we've had some some discussions since I created this, so maybe the model that we would. Ask to present, since I've been, uh with a happy of a part-time administrative. Uh to assist with um some of the administrative hurdles and I'll get into that a little bit later. And then replacement of uh that was sixty by forty section of the river fire station neighbor. Uh it's an area where we used to do pump testing, and so there's a big fifteen thousand down. It's in the ground. That's been there since the oldest person I have has is associated with those fire, has said it was everything out there, so it's probably been there since the sixties when the city was built. Uh. Is the tank spilling, as you can see where the pump or the asphalt is broken, but actually coming out there now, let's read, and so. Uh my concern is that we're gonna end up putting a fire engine in into a pit. Uh and so we were gonna need the doors to repair that. Uh yeah, some customer, some rough estimates, uh I think we could probably just fill these things with some gravel. And book concrete over the top of it, uh I think it's kind of possible anywhere. The estimates I got are engineering looked at, that would be about sixty thousand. Excellent. Um so basically, and I'm not gonna look for all these, um basically what I would like the admin assistant to do. Uh a significant portion of mine now, and I'm not saying that um. The work is beneath me like it's best to me, I've been there for three years now. Um. But a lot of the work that I do is the necessity, but it's also lower level work that each person are doing the job that you guys actually can do. Which is strategic, which is going out and uh considering that our policies are in in line that I'm going out and see. Of course, in part outside of funding streams, now doing that higher the fire chief's work. Uh instead of coding invoices, instead of looking at uh time sheets to apply them to certain rank, kind of words. Uh it's a lot of administrative, uh lower level admin assistant work that um I think the city would end up seeing a benefit. By having me get to do more of my achievements than. Going. Uh. Sorry. The estimated cost, and this is probably gonna change for what we present to you, would have been for a nine hundred and sixty hour, probably replaced three six hour days. Uh at around twenty eight thousand to thirty four thousand ish uh per year. Uh recovery measures, I'm confident that we can recover about ten to fifteen thousand through inspection fees. Uh that's one of the things that is really top remedies, you know, will do uh. Code enforcement fees, uh about five to seven and a half thousand. Uh we did make a grant this year, only five to seven and a half thousand, and I'm trying to train center. Uh so one of the things that is tough is, for example, code enforcement, I'll go out and we'll get a complaint about. Uh some broken abandoned cars or dump pile. And it takes me five minutes to run out there and go, yeah, that power is the violation of X, Y, Z codes. And it takes me four and a half hours to like to notice it's not. And, you know, so. Do you want your fire chief writing the boiler diagnosis or that'd be something that, you know, that administration system can be. Uh. Will give us uh some increased administrative capacity to allow me to work on some higher level work, such as creating policy revision grant right, but important fire prevention. Will allow uh me more time to participate, correct, and my hands-on training with your staff, volunteers. And it's uh they're gonna be really beneficial in helping me uh finish the image training software. And what does your fire chief do? So in addition to being your guys' fire chief, I wear quite a few hats, uh I'm one of the Black County O A S coordinators. Um so what that means is whenever there's a office emergency services request, that goes to either myself or Justin Chan, the fire chief. Uh I coordinate all the radio instruction in the county. Uh I'm the dispatcher on base, I'm whenever there's an issue with one of the fire departments with uh sheriff's office. Um I'm having to go between to make sure that um complaint, one is valid on fireside. Uh and then two gets addressed uh uh with sheriff's office. I'm the fire chief's association vice president, uh all of those jobs aren't necessarily uh. One hundred percent city of Willows, but they're all things down for our community that have to get done. And the nature of fires for us in one county is there's two big fire chiefs, there's me. And then there's just the hanging one. And all the other departments are a hundred percent volunteer. And they are struggling to find the bandwidth to just make sure that calls are being responded to. Um so, you know. If myself or Justin are, you know, doing these jobs, they're not gonna get done, they're not should reading on the structure for the county, every benefits for it. From it, um but eventually you wanna work, so uh it's one of those blessings and curses of being in a small community. Um I go to a lot of meetings. Sorry. Uh so we do agenda review, multi- uh monthly management meetings, monthly all answer meetings with my career staff, uh E M C C meetings. Uh uh multidisciplinary task force meetings. Uh I sit on the table of five for the county's homeland security grant. Uh off area radio meetings, various other things being after hours. Uh there's the chief association meetings, Willows Rural Fire Protection Board meetings, volunteer business meeting, volunteer training nights, and then the city council meetings. Excellent. Uh I authorize some grant packages for the city and the rural, I manage and track all of the implemented grant packages. Uh oversee the construction projects, uh I transmit all of our invoices. I prepare all city fire department staff reports, resolutions, I prepare all uh rural district board documents. Test and then mercy uh uh mercy uh preposition of staff and requests. I submit track O A S reimbursements for preposition striking responses. Higher training, evaluate, and discipline your staff. Uh vehicle bait program. Press releases, biweekly database for the city council, uh monthly section of the newsletter. Uh large-scale code enforcement cases, uh building request for proposals. There's a lot more to this job than the entire cheese that's following fires and training volunteers. And that's kind of the intent of these slides, all the things that we do. Uh. Where I need more time to focus, uh I need more time to focus on mandated inspections on our fire department, so that's the big piece, I think, that we could uh. There's a fair amount of what they can do to improve upon their fire protection program. Uh our managing uh managing code enforcement and managing vehicles, but not necessarily being one of those along the. Uh of others. Policy reviews, uh more of the grant package assembly and some mills with less of that thing. Uh I need to spend more time uh doing hands-on carrying model for myself. Um because I'm starting to get rusty, I'm trying to be intuitive today and noticed it. Uh A L S. Uh the TV relationships, home and strength thing. Expansion of our public education program, that's another good thing I wanna work on in twenty twenty five. We do a really good job at matching schools, we do a really good job at updating up the kids, but there's also another huge protecting population in our area that we do very well with, and it's the city of citizens. Uh so getting out there, you know, helping them figure out how and they set their house up on the way, it's better, it's gonna, you know, facilitate less which trips and falls. Um how can we set them up to prepare, or when they need us to show up, do they have their, their listening medications made? Uh do they have their um their pulse forms still up? Uh you know, is their mercy contact stable? Somewhere they're worried, able to tie up, they're unable to communicate with us, uh there's a lot of that stuff that uh we cheer in and I really have a desire to do. I know uh building out that fire to be fine, what is Willows fire, where are we going, how are we? You think you. I don't think it counts. Last one.
I have one question. We were talking about the driving and ordering the engine chief for the following months, that's what you generally probably didn't know about. How does the funding work? Do you have things done when you order it, some bunch of stages, if we're gonna figure out what the fund is, is it the whole thing, or application, or?
So then a couple of the next noises that the council has, uh I. There's um and it's varies based on community factor, I haven't talked to all of them yet. Uh one of the, there's like the the common element that I see uh. Entities having the funnel things before is, for example, if you're steeping, you know, buy it and you don't pay a dollar until you pick it up. Uh or you would pay for it all upfront in cash, and you get a significant like a like a nine, ten percent discount for any quarter. Uh what some agencies are doing, I don't know if the uh. Uh for example, Orland did this, and I don't know if the math still maths with the changes in the interest rates. Uh what a lot of entities have done is they've gotten out, went out and got my loan. Paid the cash price, but the interest on the loan was less than what the discount was going to be. Uh so, um likely with our financial situation, I see us doing somewhere. Uh uh doing similar thing, we'll be having to lease it, um not now. Uh it'll be somewhere around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars now, and then about a hundred thousand dollars a year for. Yes.
Now the only thing that I notice as we go through here is the percentage of calls for the Willows rural. And then what we've been paying as a city, Willows has been a percentage of their properties next phase. As they're going to discuss this with Willows rural, that they still call volume, um that next basis, what we're going to, we're all going, we're listening, um providing to them. As a servant, just talking about what those are seeing impact in the future.
So the rural, um I think has a, I don't speak for the rural more completely. But I think they do realize something is in that league with the contract. Uh they're currently outdoing a two eighteen event for the assessment increase. Uh which we will tell in the votes for that on uh April sixteen. Um and that will effectively add about a hundred and fifty percent to their budget, uh the rural districts, just for um everyone's information, the rural district's budget right now. Is about a hundred thousand dollars is secured property, uh the secured revenues. So they gave about sixty four thousand dollars in property less, which hasn't really changed a whole lot. Um and then they had a very small special assessment that was approved by the voters in nineteen ninety two, which brings in about thirty four thousand five hundred dollars. Um that hasn't increased, and I just basically stayed at that and so they didn't know anything about. There is uh getting a pretty big deal from the city, and I think that was the driving factor for them to uh move forward with trying to get the two to that.
We love you, man. Uh yeah, just a couple of questions on uh uh rolling stock analysts for the future and like that. I know it changed in over six months, but I never, I paid a lot of attention to it. What would you say are the loan preparednesses for uh increased E V population and throwing the water waves and E P P required for all that?
So that's gonna pop some, uh one of the things we're working on right now in uh. Invite a submission, send a mail by getting one, which is gonna change, hopefully it gets fast, uh it's been a lot of work here, presented in the elders office. And then uh the worst supervisor to mock their husband, granted, I really been helped with. And uh helping us get and rooting the right people to push some of the selection through, but and kind of finding that in the dialogue pen. Uh so that package will be a little bit better, some of the B P setup, as far as the E V car response goes, it's still really new. Uh I've never kind of uh cut on a couple of E D cars and training. And then we go over some of the stuff, there's some considerations we have to to do. Uh well, our equipment will work, it's just, it's the, you know, your gears. Uh and so we are, we're, we talk about, I don't know, New York, uh big bunch of patient stuff, um. The other thing too that's come up um with E V cars is the heavy metals that are in batteries. And so when those uh cars catch on fire, they basically put all the turns on the scoops. Uh because heavy metals, you can extend and you, it's a moment. So uh we have a chapter, uh that's one of the things that you look in my boards written on is uh there's a few companies that I'm not looking at here, that supposedly. Able to remove it, um there's a few companies that have set up a commercial needs services, where you back up those turnouts and they send it off to them and they can clean it. The problem with that is we send off half our turnouts that half our guys will have turnouts for the next book. And so it is the initiative and then uh. We're working on some of the answers and I'm fearful that a lot of those things will come about big help shots.
Yeah, that's, I guess that's my concern, we're seeing the same thing, and we're trying to do very little E V stuff. And uh the every six months, the answer changes on what's the best S O G for for coaching and like that. Uh every time that S O G changes, the zeros add up.
Yeah.
There's an extra zero in, so uh just if you don't mind to keep us a little on. Uh as that develops, what kind of capital outline might be required for additional E P, additional turnouts all of itself?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Oh, yeah. Chief, uh thank you very much for that, that excellent report, looking forward to watching, watching, hearing what video, obviously, all that. So is that all you do with your list? Is it, what do you do with your personal? Anyways. No, you've been very proud of your name, uh you've done, like I said before, well saved again. You had the big shoes to go, to fill, you took over as fire chief, those fire forming, chief, we like. But you have filled them, chief, amazing job, we've been very proud of the smart home all the Saturday. Uh I I'm uh appreciate the comments uh for the just like working. You two eighteen process, which, you know, definitely mine too. And uh, you know, with the exception of. City rural partnership, being our financial house of cards, you know, it has been a long time. I'm I'm real pleased that we're working on that, and I know we build anything for that in our rear. Issues, but, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, I mean, really, to run a busy rural art department is insane, you know. But anyway, no, thank you very much for. Interesting report. Always good to hear. Despite our public safety. You know, our, our, our duty is to provide our citizens with that public safety. You know, unfortunately, here we are once again talking about Agent Two. Agent Two's done, she's done a fantastic service for the community. But she's worn out, completely worn out. How many years have I been talking about this? At the top of my, my budget request, we go past several years. Marty Brown, the city manager, could attest that is replacing the division two. We need to replace engine two, so. That'll be my budget request again, assuming it now. Very good. I know it's, I know it's a large list, but that's, that's, that's just priority. You know, and it's, you know, once again, things break, right? So, so now our, our ladder. And engine three are number one engine out or silent. So here we are, depending on worn out engine two. And, and, you know, and, you know, the type three engine five and the type three volunteer, right? The mutual lane, right? So hopefully those are, truck four repairs. How long do you figure in, in each of three repairs? Any idea, any?
Well. Sure answers, we have really, I don't need to, we had to figure out how to try and raise the ladder. Cause not that starts. So that was, that was the task. We got that figured out, but they're, they haven't started off. They were able to plug it into the computer and let it be their injected or something.
You know, and. Just a reminder to, we are, we're working out some, but also may or may not be aware. And I believe Wayne may have been an acting city manager at the time too. Yeah, I think he was. He had just come in as, as our acting city manager, and I agree. But the Will's fire version gap was five. For decades, many of them. Since the. Our number right, then the, the budget gets the twenty four. So with that, I. Fully supporting your request for our time in this period of the system is. When, when it was the chief captain. You know, the large captain duties obviously were administrative duties, fire inspections almost like, right? You know, which was. They, they, you know, we couldn't force them to use, you don't have that thing. That's, you know, that's, you know, the twenty percent reduction staff, this, this size. We felt, we meant feeling it, the agencies meant, you know, cities now experiencing it, that we're in the government works. You know, to, in, in with team, we're out by it, it's significantly, possibly, it's like, much smaller. The cost, the cost associated with the part-time, this is recovered, which is fantastic. Uh, it means, you know, somebody needed, they violently needed, just. You know, just with your overall help, then with your organization, also to you. Grants, as you well know, you're, you were mentoring, right? Grants are great and you've done an awesome job at locating and writing and getting the financial audit, but. Then you have to manage the grants. Now that is time consuming, as you know, as you know. So you, you. That's the only thing that's definitely you need, need that help, so. But. Anyway, no, thank you for, for the, for the, for the. That, you know, yeah, I mean, the place you do, and right behind that, we, we. To look at, it's, we're going to be a matter of a few more years replacing, you know, our fourth. With even a, with even a higher level. You know, your work. You said, probably we would do in the organization. And you outstanding, there's some work and. Maybe for all charity, make every minute of their time. Thank you very much if you say.
You mentioned very near rear fire station, if you're repaired, you need to fill that. I believe that's still a little train part. You kind of look at that and rather, what would you guys do then? Control pump testing. And that's to my recall, that was really the second law that water. Through that system.
Yeah, so the plan is, and before we. Commit to filling that with ground. We're gonna try to pump test our stock at one of these new facility. They put a forty thousand gallon tank in behind a fire station at their training facility. And so basically the only thing that will change, I think it's actually going to work out better and faster for us. Is right now before we pump test, we drive down Canada sixty eight without one engine up, because it's the hardest that things can go all year. And so it's like grabbing sixty eight or one. And they have everything that's set up all the time. And it was, of course, being wrapped to theirs, graph, their tank is actually dark enough. And they installed that original tank. The biggest pump that's, that you're supposed to be able to do in there is a thousand gallons a minute. Which was fine back in those days because that was about the size of a pump. Truck comes fifteen hundred and so it's very difficult to actually get the fluids because the water starts to aerate. And you start sucking air bubbles through the water with tanks, both of them. So more than likely, if it works out well, we're dragging them to Portland to pump test. And there are new forty thousand gallon tank. Will probably be there.
And then, uh, fear of fire. I have to make the energy of this. Position in time, and maybe full time. And add a different duties to that.
So I think that there is definitely for a whole time working firehouse. I think that it would take time though, because this position, this exact position. Has never really existed in the organization. There was a day captain before, but also a big piece of their job was dispatching, uh, used to have the house dispatch. And a big piece of their job was actually responding to fire laws. This person wouldn't be the suppression person, uh, wouldn't be suppression personnel. And so getting some of those tasks lined out, I think definitely there's full time work. But I think it's a few years off to get everything built out officially, so we're not always seeing money, wasting time. And you know, there's also the reason other parts of the city, so kind of especially about maybe chairman between. Me services and myself. But I think in the, I think in the, the short term. I think we would be better off with a part-time spot until that person got. Comfortable with, you know, task A through D. And then, you know, B through M, and then, you know, once we get to Z, that's going to be a full-time gig. But I don't think it's realistic to try to build all that out at once.
Also, if I could just add, I wanted to mention that we are. Planning to bring forward on, on the second meeting in April. Kind of our wish list, but really it's a needs list that's, you know, is pared down because possibly maybe because. A wish list can be really, really long and really, you know, in the discussion and section of staff report will show you are a long wish list, but. Really it's to, you know, check him with the council on, this is where we think we're headed in building a budget for next year. And before we do that, we'd like to see, not on the status quo, obviously, but on the, on the new. Ideas of things we think we need. I'd like to see from the council. Kind of what your thoughts are, especially in light of the fact that the new sales task has just been proven to be our first budget. That included when the budget in the future. So. There'll be an opportunity to sort of look at holistically, the entire city and all departments and how they interact and. Had a long discussion about this particular position as well.
Um, they need to, can you grant me any, any brand funding? Be applied, not in Latin. It's still in the build process, can be applied towards the region?
Yes and no? It starts to get very special. Because then you start doubting this. Live for funding for projects that are already been. You'll have to prove for a word. Now, I'm not saying that hasn't happened in the past. I'm gonna help it happen to other entities, but I think the council. Needs to be prepared when they say yes, that, that things are being bought paid for by the state because. There's a lot of. A lot of ways I can go south, I think that, that probably will be.
It might also be possible to do something when it's not. Yet been delivered to the city and it's still in the building, but that would be a window if there was ever an opportunity. Might be possible, but I agree with the chief, it's, it's going to be, it will be challenging.
Um, now, I don't know, could you want to expand on, uh, your guys' votes or? Using the radio towers around, or something? So there's always been a. Big issue with radios. We are, and, and Willows as a whole. It's got pretty easy radio coverage because of where the, where the towers are. Where a lot of the problems start to come back, especially in like north, east county, and the city highway, forty five four, or the county of East City. There's some secret issues out there. And the big, the big thing that we're looking at is designing a digital system, which has been something that. Rest from eight since after nine eleven, just after nine eleven. It's where the big, the nice, all these radio brands, the, the things that we buy, we teach them to find. Which is the type of radio system. So it's in the very, very infancy levels. But the cops actually have a bigger issue with the radios than the fire has. But if the cops are going to rebuild their infrastructure to make it work, we will probably be brought along and so. It's making sure that. You know, we're writing, we're in a position where we're writing grants to do funding for the infrastructure. And we don't get ourselves in a spot where, well, yay, the county just switched everything to digital, this is great, but none of our stuff's going to work with it now we're traveling it. And so I think we're probably five years out of that. But when it happens, if it happens. Will be a four year fire flying, I guess. That's not just by, that's not, but that's the timeline that all that entire. I just thought it was. Great presentation, thank you for your time, thank you for what you do. Putting up all the spots here sometimes. And so, yeah. Really appreciate the presentation, but it was well done. Sorry we didn't get to watch the whole video. Perfect, what have you launched? You've hired a sixth, another comment in consent founder. All nighters and consent founder, Mr. Rucci, and our three five one voting, they vote. It must not sound very important, but you have to prefer to judge that the manager in the meeting, instead of describing, describing, can you ask? Individuals wishing with a rest of the city, not concerning consent, not their items. Or drugs given, they're not already on the agenda, are invited to make oral comments about three months of this time. Please regard the comments to be negative, not negative, and not the stat or all. Is there any follow-up comments at this time?
If you want to invite to say your name, we'd like that.
We must with the Will's library. Last year, the city council provided funding in this region. Funded to transfer to enhance the children's library position from part time full time. And unfortunately, in the lumber, the children's library. Except that the position at the Oregon library. I wanted to know, and volunteers as well as a lot of parents who contacted us, want to know why. This position is. That the city council grows on the money. Because they've got a lot of plans for the summer eating program coming up. And that starts to beat families or schools after. So we have no children's library. Okay, great. And one more question, has the insurance adjuster approved? The repairs in the back room?
Yes, we have an initial adjustment, yeah, for doing engine designs right now. And then once that is designed, it will be installed and I've actually been keeping the library director to date on.
Is there an estimate on?
Four to six weeks.
Well, we said postponed the, the. All our books, per se, were. That's a lot of schedules, not anything. Right, is there any other, all the comment, and then you can not only get them now?
And the Washington mobility issues, you know. Have a really hard deal. Feel like a ten man wizard of oz or something. The mayor. In comments, um, said about. Is, um, traffic lines. So then a couple of years, I saw a, you know, a couple of senators said about it. Mansion, just one of them. And I'm sure, okay, Starbucks and Cedar Hills. Sit at Gotham each other, and you'd say if I live in that district, and it's a free birthday. Enjoyed, I don't know, the commission is real. We go a little, you know, the Lord has sent a church. So between, let's say the Chevron station and AMDM. Beyond the Lord, they just need a church, it's kind of like a. I have the second. Few years ago, I mentioned that, and I don't think my remarks will contact you all, but. What was happening in that time in terms of. Grow out of remediation of hazards. There were two girls and there was, there was a kind of large. Commercial van. And they were out in the middle of Santa, Santa's street. And I think because the van traveled south, right, Starbucks. The center lane. Getting ready to, I'm like. Going to the. Line and there's three landings at Starbucks. Site conditions were not available to the girls and so. They, they were, they were crossing over from Starbucks Cedar Hills, okay? With the C H D is right there and from the van. Got to a certain point, but in front of the C H D, the girls couldn't see. Around, we're going to see if there was any Northbound traffic. And. So on. I, I just went like this and. Crazy, they did heard the fort, and we all know it's going on traffic, we're seeing. From AMDM. From A M P M, north of the world forty eight at the time. It was such a nuance. But I'm almost embarrassed and bringing it up as a public exception, but I'm sort of like nuance has died. Our business, I took off, whether there's a remediation in the future, uh, something that takes it easier. Because I was a Greek, I see. Kids going back, kids and adults with their children. So really not feeling embarrassed of saying that um. It, it should be, as in crime, a person of interest. Uh, I think it should be from a. Red on the map, I think it should right there specifically because it's. That right, okay. Just in a, um, for years, I've been advising, if I was a vehicle, every year, you know. Give me a little, that's a little, that's a little, you're gonna figure that out. So um, the uh. What I call, I don't know, 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 that one. In every direction and also. Wood Street in every direction because that did your intersection right there is so relative. I, I can't tell you how to be, I call it ghost cars. It can happen around dusk, usually event. In the uh. Beyond dusk period, you know, people are still at home. They, they, people don't turn on their lights. So in, in my top of the world, there is some kind of solution out there. But um, just for now, I'm bringing your attention and both of it have been out. Appreciate it.
Making up the comments or being unwritten in there?
Come back, I'm looking for. Multi-keeper level. Three item sixty. There is a third topic, which we need to approve, so city justice department on the south of New Rice. Sixty, lease uh, city property. Sixty, where we're lost in the area, uh, fired under considering reason of that. Six that, there are four, uh, against enforcement, which is not a wireless. G, there are four, considering made advanced police fleets, their permissions. And six page, there are support, regular transfer grants. Any questions, anybody pushing on the items, any suggestions?
I have six videos to be, we need to continue with that.
I have birthday, it's uh, at the end of the month. Uh, now there's, you are right, I mean, I, I'm all for the missing night. Looking glass.
Four to zero.
Of course, we're sorry. All right, next time we're doing that, item seven A, purple heart strike. Uh, this is due, you're moving, we're moving things, so we're gonna have to install purple heart rail sign. On California Highway sixty. My, but the council will be coming to the right.
Or a presentation.
Presentation, sorry, Joe. We can see a bit, no. Uh, so just a little, little break over view of what we have here. You said it was a letter of red, letter of support. It was gonna go through that, it's gonna go to Caltrans, it's just three approved. Um, this is regarding Purple Heart Science. Um, in July of twenty twenty four, the city. Did a proclamation to becoming Purple Heart City. Uh, the B N W, post seventeen seventy in auxiliary, uh, came to accept that proclamation. We've also raised a convention with Glen County Board of Supervisors. And received a proclamation designating Glen County as a, as a Purple Heart County as well. Um, some background, a Purple Heart City doesn't communicate that on the military, military members who have been wounded or killed in combat. The designation was a way to recognize the sacrifices of these service members who should gratitude for their contributions. The Purple Heart City proclamation. Does support those of sacrifice in the benefit for our readings. Uh, the main point of this kind of taking it to the next level and including signage, which is what we're gonna be east and west. Entries to the city by the city limits signs, and they're also working with the county to have in place that the north and south entrances. Uh, into the city as well. Um, and what that does is just ensures a Latin symbol of, of the gratitude for military numbers who are injured, killed in combat. Um, so instead of just having a proclamation with the states that we are, we've got a visual symbol. That shows that we are, and lives entering the city. Uh, I know that the U S also trying to work with City Portland to pass uh, proclamations and have signage in their area as well. So they're trying to pull it together to make a whole county and city jurisdictions. Uh, thank you. Earl, do you have a picture of the?
Yes.
Cause everything's taken out right now. Yes, and it will be that, check it up on the TV. Um, so with the right away being on one sixty two or the east and west sides coming to the, the city, this letter of support will be for those. Um, in order, it will be sent with the, it's district three. The B F W will be heading the project and be working with them on the encouragement permit. The city and the county will be assisting with communications and relations to Caltrans to help the always the cumbersome process of giving you Caltrans a permit. Permit. Uh, and there's a picture of the, the draft imagery that they want to use, and would have its own standalone side, it's fine, cause the idea. Now, um, and yeah, just wanna thank the, the B F W, that they can believe on this and.
Thank you, Earl.
Yes, Carol, thank, thank everybody, thank you guys, Stan, this is. I think we can agree that this is a, a good thing, is we signed our proclamation at this line, but you're back to. That or, any questions?
Thank you, Eric. How's the many questions? Oh, just a comment from the, yeah, let's get this done, like, no, quite here, but no, thank you to the B F W. Read this story, reveal it in science, uh, just your recommendation for California District Three. There's currently supposed to be a signage study with, uh, in admission before meetings, but. Uh, several sixty two, so many people literally instructed from the city limits. Here in Walhart Duke, uh, Dean Street in Wood Streets. In twenty twenty six, there's a signage study, uh, way by Caltrans staff, right, you know. Due to the long range of all the, all the signs, uh, especially at the west side of the city, there's a three way. You have no deal with that, I mean, you're just, businesses and science, it, 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 it's a mess. There, there's a lack of, of school signage for all, and again, I mean, right there. Your district issues, no anything else, so uh, just, just uh. Uh, staff, I think you could put a, these were, but if you count your, put it in a prominent location where it can actually be seen. Not just jumbled together with a bunch of other signs, it'd be nice, I mean, there is a location that would stand out. But it's a mess there with signs, it's a real mess on the west side. One sixty two, so it's a, not, not at all, not at all, I mean, plenty of. Great locations, easy to see, but, you know, I like seeing a moment, I just build a location if you're my coach. Thank you. What do you mean? It's uh, definitely, uh, it should be done, needs to be done. We have a number of living purple heart recipients, several which are resident. Uh, community right now, not to mention all those who've sacrificed, marrying pregnant. Thanks, all ahead.
I want to go quick if you have breaking down, like, our government representatives, there would be, did see a lot of support, so if you have questions for them, they're available as well. Same thing. As far as the location goes, um, we're, we're really looking at, I think that we'll. Have them try to pick a spot and work with our improvement department representative and make contact with them, they've identified, uh, in the Caltrans meeting, they've already went to earlier this year. Who've got contacts, so we've got somebody, it's just not a screen that will work into the progress, you know, to get to this, so I think that'll be really helpful. Looking for. Uh, um, it's gonna be a great, uh. Maybe it's the internet. About it, um. My question is, are the signs free? They're not, I don't believe that they are, but if you got any district draft incentive design, this is one of the, we, this is one to be for. The W. We want to work on the design and that's, that's kind of the final design.
Oh, we sound a bit. Um, I was curious if you know what. Signs, I mean, have. Works, please. All the cases now. I didn't know that's up there.
As far as the, our afterstrategies that we have, I think that would be something to be on our own authority. Possibly, and I don't think Caltrans would have a say in the of that. Um, so yeah, absolutely.
Kind of those are, that's, and, I was starting to write a paper.
Yeah.
Possibility, how I need to find. I'd be one of us. Speak for itself.
Thank you, open that, went on, went to those signs, and I should get up, you've got a nice purple sign. I know some of them have been done, but yeah, there's some, there's some space to make that up. And then something on there as well.
Yeah. Yeah, because of the, 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 uh. City signage. Charger to be out there. I am. Everybody, yeah, yeah, so main person. So. All right, I'm gonna actually, um. Right, we. That's the strange behavior. Where the, uh, those three city councils, city levels, in support of the disinstallation of the order, trail sign, California Highway two, but the B F W. Post seventy, seventy up somewhere to be up there. Right, I'm saying, thank you. Uh, this will be.
I see.
What?
I'm sorry, council member, right?
Yes.
Council member Hanson?
I am.
And Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Thomas is absent.
No, not where there are. Any just compare ages, if you have in life, if you have a, one or here, maybe there.
We think that's not a terrible nature, our space for all of her work, and.
Carol, I've spent a lot of time into the city, but. And whereas to get, and being a department and giving me my first mock interview. The training and sort of bull, especially in the same room, every night, so. Uh, yes, last time our guards were good, especially with the naked. Thank you, yes, very much for calling me. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item seventy, one two three five, street danger program. This will lead to another constitution from the part. I gotta send you. It's the party now.
It does, yes. You recall, uh, this began a program the city's been involved in for two years. This year will be our third and final year of the contract with CGI Communications who, um, worked with the planning commission originally. Two, two and a half years ago, it came up with a design and then they fabricated the banners, installed them. Um, all that on my CGI communications. Typically, in an annual basis, they like to, um, change out, uh, the design of the leaning, format. Um, if you may recall, the February eleventh council meeting, I brought this forward to the council for discussion about the approach for this coming year. It was decided that, um, staff, AKA me, would work directly with CGI communications. To come up with a couple of different design formats, keeping the same find your refuge theme and the same artwork. Um, but just making some small changes to fonts and formatting. These two drafts that are before you option A and B and then staff report and packet. Um, are the two options that they came up with. I'm recommending, um, option A. Um, just little known fact, I actually worked in the marketing division of A T T for four years and so, you know, I picked up. Enough there to be dangerous and I can tell you that driving at twenty five or thirty miles an hour and looking at either of these. I think that the one, the first option A is a cleaner, easier to read design that will. Catch somebody's eye than, um, the other design, which is a little busier with a font that. The Willow font, a little harder to read. Um. That's my recommendation, certainly the council, um, the options to choose one of the two options or having to go back to your drawing board and work on more design options with, um, CGI communications. That concludes my presentation. I'll see your questions for me.
Well, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just, yeah, I, I, I've always liked my, uh, banners for a little bit. Have been a little bit. You know, I'll defer to Marty's expertise. I'm not a signer. But, yeah, I, I, yeah, I hope with option A. And option B looks nice, but I think you're probably right, Marty's first, you're right. Looks, it will, and two of them, you're right. Very good. Thank you. That's all.
All right, what do you think? What happens to the old signs? Do they, we take them in Detroit or do we have, do we supervise this?
Um, they take them, although I believe, um. They can give them to the businesses if they want to, and I think they maybe did that last year. I definitely know they've done it in other cities, because this has come up as a discussion point when we were first doing the contract. So if that's something that, um, interests businesses or interests the council that we pursue and certainly, um, what I'm sure that.
If, if it's easy, if it's, if it's a thing, it's probably not worth.
Uh, I, I think it is, I mean, I think, I think from their perspective, that if we're gonna, as long as we're changing out with something new. I think that they view it as the person who sponsored the banner kind of has ownership over it, so. And a lot of businesses, I know in other cities, they showed me pictures, literally of businesses who take their banners and put them up in their business. Okay. So. Okay, okay, I'll investigate that. All right.
Mm-hmm. If the font seems smaller, I'll define where it should and sort those, I mean, it's a little bigger, I should be. But I do like having them in the same place and option. So I'm gonna, if there's a room on the design, so just stay in the forms a little bit on here.
Something, yeah, I think that what they would probably, I think what they would do is they would make the green. Where the, the bottom green, where the wording is a little bit like taller, if you will, so that they, there's, because they're using pretty much most of that space and maybe reduce the, um. Images just slightly to make a bigger font. I think that's how they would probably approach that, certainly if that interests the council. They can pursue that. I don't, I don't think that's too hard or too much work and I, I see what you mean, that that could be, um. Although difficult to read just because it's smaller font than the other one, you're right.
Open my gun, please. You actually want?
I like the, I like the battery that you can see. And we, I have a kind of, we just like, you know, a lot of Marty shared, it's not the, the, by graphic, it was for. From here.
I also think reading willows in that sort of, um. I- italicized font is another issue when you're going by twenty five miles an hour. And then the board, they're using a, a texture on the background that's supposed to look like wood. Which I think just makes it a little for your eye at twenty five miles an hour, a little busy, hard to read, um. That was my only, um, issue with that, and I frankly, I do like it all together better. Find refuge in historic willows is one thing, but those are.
Yeah, they, they should.
I was gonna have one. Maybe, because I need to get that. It might be. He's all right there. I like that, I don't think it might be, but I'd like to say for. Experts. I agree, I agree with that. Maybe, yeah. For our P, um, and you're saying how to point my mom or. Are, is there a simple ways to achieve a lot of those that be? Is that, that's fair separated, I'm not, you're concerned about, you know, there's, there'll be one message on this time, we'll just, the next one's.
Is that, that's, that's separated, you know, not, you're concerned about, you know, the, there's, there'll be one message on the sign, and the next one's, this is read the store, close, what? So.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, if you want to go with option B, you can change the Willow's font to something that is more of a serif, um, sans serif, instead of a serif font. Um, yeah, I'm sorry, I was, I worked in marketing, so I got some of the terminology there, you know, which is like block font, like this, so it's easier to read it. And non-impulsive and non-italicized, right?
Okay. Bye.
It's your discretion, and I'm not wedded to either, I just gave you a recommendation, that's all.
I mean, oh.
And. Yeah, if that's okay, I mean, I will bring it back, we'll just cha, we'll just simply change the Willow's font to something that's more legend. Okay.
You know, like, there's, you know, this sign, well, that very well, whether, with our, with the long hot summers, and, you know, wet mirrors. Hopefully. Yeah, I mean, they built that remarkably well, not baiting.
Yeah.
So, we're, sure, he, new call, I'm, we're, like, last year, one, one year. That year. None of you. Really, really, those are welcome, I mean, those are quite welcome, like, banners.
Perfect. So, that's in square, item seven D, launch, uh, what do you think, comments and reports. Council member correspondence, I have not received any correspondence that I know of.
We haven't received any, I don't know.
Uh, city council comments and reports, start with, uh, that's not anybody else, right? Uh, yeah, so, uh, just a report from the, uh, Glen County Waste Management Regional Agency. Um, the only, uh, action item of note on there is we did vote to, uh, continue the annual solid waste parcel fee, which is forty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. That forty-two dollar fee has been the same since nineteen ninety-eight, is not called up, and we would say, that's it. Thank you, thank you. Good, well, if it's remember, right, and then.
I have seen those, that, yeah. That's, that's, I guess, I suggested. Which, I'm sure. We think, well, speaking of, we're, we're sure, and I, and we, we're, and and we, because there's, and, 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 so, no work on that, so, and, and, um, thank you, she's, even on Tuesday, I, I asked her, Joe, said, you know, you, but, you know, like, I think just a little, yeah, so, yeah, so, 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 we did, and we, but our strong connection to the concept of when we were, and we should, I would just think this session. So after the meeting, I was just saying, I turned, it's, I think, absolutely free, commissioners, and they, they, they come very strong, I mean, they wanted to maintain plant condition, and they